Yeah, I guess Vicki, would you like to lead us from the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your head. Dear Heavenly Father, please shine your grace upon us. Help us to make good and wise decisions. Help to keep our meeting peaceful and cordial. And please protect us as we all travel home. In your name we pray. Amen. All right. I'd like to welcome everybody here to the Wells County Council Meeting, December 4th, 2018. First thing here on the agenda is the minutes. And Chuck, you mentioned you had something you'd like to-
Well, it might be a moot point now. My correction would have been when I made the motion to, for the seed fund, to fund Nate's payments through the Regional Sewer District. With Councilman Huggins' suggestion, I added on that that should be paid back this calendar year. And I do not believe that was reflected in the minutes.
Didn't state that.
But here again.
So basically, just remove-
It's actually an addition, that it should have been paid back this calendar year.
This calendar year, okay, okay. Yeah, it's not in there, is it? Can we just go ahead and amend that then to the minutes? Is there a problem with that? It's in that financial-
It's actually the very last three sentences.
So you want me to add in calendar year 2018 after the, to repay the seed fund for additional salary-
Yes.
In year 2018.
But here again, it might be a moot point, we'll see.
Sure. But that, well, yeah. Okay. All right. Any other additions or corrections to the minutes? I guess if not, do we have a motion to accept the minutes amended?
Motion to accept the minutes.
We have that motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Call in favor, signify by raising your hand. opposed, motion carries. All right. Next thing is transfers. Josh isn't here, is he? Josh Condon. I had just one question. It was, there wasn't really any explanation to it, it's probably something simple, but it was in regards to the transfer on road striping. I don't know what's that. Yeah, it was from Road Repairs over to Paint and Road Striping. And I seen he had 35,000. It was budgeted in 2008, for this 2018. And he's moving it over another 24, 508. And I just wanted to know, if he did additional road striping, or?
Um, I think he did mention that in the meeting, because when they did all their chicken sill this year, they didn't used to stripe the roads, but this year they did. I remember him saying that, so that might be the reason.
They've increased the amount of chip sill, a lot of it, but they do each year, so-
Yeah, and then he actually added, yeah.
I mean, I know things have gone up in cost, and I thought, well, I didn't know if he's been on that, usually they don't, usually we never see that.
Well, and the reason I know that is because he mentioned that in the meeting, because down on my way on Jeff Road, they put striping, and I don't think we've ever had striping on that road.
Okay.
So he said that they was doing some additional striping on it.
I know. Okay, okay. That was my only, the only thing I seen there. I thought, boy, it jumped up quite a bit, and I just was curious of it. Anybody else, any other council members have any questions in regards to, I know there's a lot of them, we're at the end of the year, obviously, so we're balancing, getting everything balanced out, so another one's in the reds. I guess with no other further questions on that, we just let you know it's from the clerk's office, transfers are from the clerk's office, sheriff's office, surveyor's office, extension office, election board clerk, superior court, jail, county highway, highway administration, and highway maintenance repairs. So it's all hodgepodge of everybody's.
Motion to approve transfers within the offices.
Okay.
Second.
We have a second. Call in favor, signify by raising your hand. opposed, motion carries there. All right. Next thing we have is additional appropriations. We have two of those. One of them's from the Community Corrections Project Income, and the other one is Local Road and Street. And there was explanation letters with both of those. And just to let you know, Community Correction Project, I asked Beth here, I just want to make sure that money is there, because that's project money that comes in, so we do have that.
You should have had with your packet I gave you tonight, sheets that showed you how much money's in the funds.
Shows that, so. That was my, my main concern, is that we're not shorting something here to pay for something we didn't have money for. And then on the hot mix, was just additional, there was just overruns, or cost overruns on a couple of the projects, hot mix projects that Josh had. Any questions or concerns over additional appropriations requested here? I guess if not, do we have a motion to accept both additional appropriations as presented?
Second.
We got a motion. We got a second. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. opposed, motion carries, 6-0 there. All right. Monty, next up.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello, Monty.
We have 107 inmates this morning, 16 are F6, and 11 are VOC. We have our monthly report. And also, I emailed you, we would like your consideration in allowing us to raise our hourly pay for part-time jailers. When we hire any jailer, they start at part-time. You'd be surprised how many work maybe two days or three and find out what the job's really like.
Sure.
Don't stay, so we don't want to invest a lot of training in that if they're not going to stay. But we feel that this would attract a little bit of person. And we do have a couple of part-timers that have been loyal and always schooled, but also waiting for a full-time job. Something that would give them an incentive to stay.
Sure. Were you wanting to do something yet this year? Are you looking for, starting in the next-
Probably start in the next year.
-year to deal with? Do you want Scott to be involved in that in January? Is that what you're?
Well, it would start in January, is what we're trying.
Oh, okay, so we'd have to do something here now, act upon it now to-
If not, if you want to discuss it now, you can bring it back in January.
I mean, I see, I looked at that, and the dollar amounts were pretty low. I can understand somebody not wanting to-
Did you have something in mind, Monty?
Well, we had down to bring it up to the, for 2019, the lowest base pay for just a new jailer with, because the part-timers do not get shift differential either, and we bounce them all over.
Yeah.
But that would be in 1632 per hour for those with no training, if they've been there a year, it would be 1657. But that's what we'd like to see, but we would appreciate any help we can, yes.
Because right now, it's what in the low?
Tens.
Low tens or?
High tens.
Around 11, yeah, around 11, so it's-
Around 11.
Obviously, the jailers are outside of the matrix that we just initiated, but are they, they're not outside the 3% that we gave everyone? Correct?
Right, they got a 3%.
They are, they are within the 3%.
Whole hourly range.
Whole hourly.
Well, their salary, the jailers are on it.
It's the reason I'm asking, I'm not sure either.
But part-time?
The part-time.
The part-time, not the part-time or so.
No, the part-time, part-time on your salary ordinance is-
I think the jailers are listed on there, the part-time jailers.
As receiving 3% for 2019.
I think you might have given them a little more. They might be listed on the salary ordinance.
I was gonna say, I don't have my book with me.
I got the salary ordinance.
Okay.
I have the salary ordinance. Hang on. I've got too many papers to write.
Do you always have part-timers? Will you always have part-timers in that position? Or do you, is your intent to always get those into a full-time?
Well, we probably always have part-timers. It helps the coverage, and also it gives us people, if we have a full-time opening, we've got some days trained, can step right in.
Yeah. The salary ordinance lists, just like Monty has on his paper, that the jailers are 1050 to 1075 per hour. That's what we have. Our salary ordinance also states that hourly employees shall be paid at a maximum at 1115 per hour unless, except, and then it goes on to say, except in special cases where a department head has requested additional compensation per hour, and the county council approves the request. So that's the way our salary ordinance reads for this year, and it will read that way for next year. So if you make an exception to the maximum of 1115, then we just have to have it in our minutes stating that you've approved more than what it states for part-time.
We don't have to change the ordinance then?
No.
Okay, so we could-
Because it specifically says it, the ordinance that you can make exceptions.
So in theory, we could do that in January, right? If we needed to, I mean, if it come down to it, first meeting in January, would that interrupt?
You can do it today.
Anytime, yeah, anytime now, yeah.
Because of when you wanted to make it effective, you would just want to put that in your, in your motion, if you approve it, of when you want to make the wage increase effective.
It'd make the most sense. How many, how many part-timers do you normally, it would be, you know, just round numbers?
Two to three.
Two to three. So it's not a large?
No, it's not a large.
It's just, you know, I can understand that $10, you know, $11 an hour to go in and be a jailer would not be a fun thing to do.
How many hours a week would you say that you have for part-time?
I would have to check here.
Are you getting out of that? Okay.
So we're not talking a large, to put an increase to it, we're not talking a large sum of difference here to-
If you want to wait till January, I can get the hours and the number of people we have, and then I'll do that, so you can look at it.
I'd be blessed to have that information.
Information, yeah. That way we can address it at that.
I don't know, I haven't looked at that, that's a 50% raise.
Yeah.
To me, that, you know.
You can come out and work, John.
Well, I guess I would-
You retired.
You find a lot of them are retired, the part-timers, or do you actually have younger people that could work into it?
Younger.
Younger people that want to get their foot in the door to be an officer or something like that.
Usually is what we find.
How lo, how long would you guess a part-timer sticks around? I mean, if they, if they, on average, you think six months? I mean, or a couple months?
Sometimes a year or more.
Okay. So there is some longevity to it then?
Yeah.
Okay. Why don't we do that? Is everybody agreeable, first of the year, we'll look, that way we have a little more information?
Get the facts, and doesn't mean we have to clear up to the, you know, 1632 necessarily.
Yeah, we can make some sort of adjustment possible, so, you know.
Okay.
Does sound low, but for sure.
Yeah, okay.
Is it, Monty, is there any way you could maybe do a little research and tell us what surrounding counties are, or would that-
Surrounding counties for part-time? Okay.
I would like to have that, just-
That wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, they're factoring.
Yeah, wouldn't hurt.
Yeah.
At least we know where in the body, yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
All right. Any further questions from Monty? All right. Thank you, sir.
Been a privilege working with you since this is my last year.
That's right. I forgot, yeah.
I'll make sure Monty first or not, but-
Same thing from us.
Thank you very much.
Great service, great service, yeah. Wonder if we'll see you around? Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
All right. Next we have is South Corridor Study. Maybe if I could step forward. There was a lot of pages to some of that information there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just curious, are we the first to see this, or did the commissioners?
I've just been up to the-
All right, all right, here we are. Here we are.
They've mentioned of it, but this was part of the local district plan, and it's a dedicated part for this study. That was the, was the purpose, so we made mention of it, that we're going to present this tonight. And I think they might have been, I don't even know if they were emailing copies of the quarter or so, but they will be.
Yeah.
I mean, there wasn't anything, they were comprised of pieces of this, because we've been working with this document on three different federal aid applications that went out, uh, due by this Friday, some of the crossing projects that we went after, and one that we were awarded, was actually came out of this study as well. So we were trying to really work with the document as it was developed. So, and this is kind of the culmination of that work, and where we go from here.
Okay.
So, hopefully. Try to walk around and turn them all back on again, we don't have to do that. Just introduce, this is Eduardo Codelin.
Okay, I've seen, yeah, I've seen him there.
He's the main guy behind the study.
Uh-huh.
And, uh, he's the man, so. He's got 35 years of experience, so he's been around the block several times, so it's not his first study.
Yeah.
I'm going to start the one back up again. As Toby said, my name is Carter Dean, and I'm a water frame and a typer. Early this year, water frame and a typer was selected to put together a South Corridor Route Study for the Wells County. And as you can see on the front of you, we have some objectives of the study. And we asked, what should be the reason or the objective of this study? And we came with some objectives. One of them is to serve as a guide for roadway improvement. And we have already created conceptual plan and profile for all the routes that are included in the study. We say to improve safety and traffic mobility. When I say safety, is because many of the roadway do not meet minimum design criteria. And with that, I mean, travel length width or shorter width. And for traffic mobility, obviously, it would be used for people to access the city of Blockton and the Blockton Industrial Park. Priority site, a system of transportation corridors. Development of cost for project. Obviously, we had to put cost estimates for development of this project, because that's part of the selection process. The study process, and this started with a kickoff meeting on April 5th, 2018, and some of you were present then, and you provided some input at that point. After that, we had several coordination meetings. We had a meeting with the Indiana Department of Transportation to talk about funding and the report, and somehow that producing some good benefit already. We also met with Norde, Indiana Regional-
Coordinating.
Coordinating Council, that's NERC. They put a red flag investigation that we use in this for, for the corridor. They were meeting with local business and resident. We met with Nate several times to make sure that we were on the same track, and we were going to meet his expectation on this study. We met with Panhandle Eastern, because they had some high pressure gas line on some of the road of the study. And we talked about that later, because there was some kind of significance to make some decision on those rules. We also coordinated with Norfolk Southern for the Red Rock Crossing. We have received support letters. Among them, we had letter of support from Wells County Emergency Management Agency and Norfolk Southern Corporation. We look, one of the principal things was-
Before you go on, just want to let you know that NERC, you're coordinating, you know, they did, when you mentioned that red flag study, that probably saved you $12,000 right there. And that, and they didn't charge you anything. That's part of you being in, part of that.
Yeah, Northeast.
So, you know, they were a very good resource to come up with some of that stuff, so we didn't have to do it. They did it for you, so just, thank you.
So we're looking to source of funding, and we have four. One is the Fair Eight, another one is Community Crossing Matching Program, which you're aware already that you got a million dollars from them, two weeks ago, maybe.
Yeah.
Track funding, I think we're waiting for some decision from INR, and I think it would be within the next two weeks.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, yeah. And then we have local funding, that will be the part of the campaign.
Essentially, our match, where we use it.
Uh, in the next page, we talk about the study area, and why? Did you look the next page? There is a map there with some numbers, and those are the projects that we're going to be talking about.
So, I'd agree to that, let's see how it looks.
So we get back to that, but why the reason of the study, well, Highway Corridor, we take in the future development of Wells County. I honestly believe that the corridors would be the windows of the future for Wells County. Site condition, that was based on some sharp curbs on the road, road conditions, Red Rock Crossing, illumination. Utility, we put a red flag investigation for utility. We coordinate with all utility to make sure that we're on the same pace. And the reason they say that is because sometimes we're surprised, or sometimes there are some utilities that are hard to deal with, and that can make it seem more difficult. The route selection, we sat down, and we went over and looked into the cost and all the control of the route that we select. And I think the first one is the Hoosier Highway from County Road 300 South to County Road 200. That's number three on the map, on page three. Not only this new alignment, we provide collectivity for Adams Street and Hoosier Highway, but also we eliminate two Red Rock Crossings. And also, we serve as the connector road for the Southwest Industrial Park. Name number five is the second one, County Road 300 South from 200 East to State Road One. Number five is County Road 300 South from State Road One to County Road 400 East. Seven is County Home Road and County Road 200 Intersection Improvement. That's seven on the map. And six is County Road 450 and County Road 300 South Intersection Improvement. As you can see, there are two projects there that we, at the beginning, we looked into the possibility, including that's on the study, but County Road 300 South from Hoosier Highway to County Road 200 East, I mentioned before, there are three high-pressure gas lines. And in order to update those to accommodate the project, Panhandle East, they want 3.9 million dollars.
Sure.
So that was more than the construction cost of the project. And similar situation, well, for 200 South from Hoosier Highway to County Road 400 East, the gas line also crossed that road. In addition to that, there are utility ports on both sides of the road. And to mention that we're going to have to buy right-of-way for residential area, and that probably won't go too well, so we eliminate those two.
Yeah. Can I just re-
Here on the map, 200 South, a corridor, you can kind of see it here on this map, that section of 200 South from Hoosier Highway to East, down to 100 East.
Eduardo, if you don't mind me interrupting you, my understanding is Panhandle Eastern wants to bolster and enlarge what goes across, just for strengthening? Is that, is that my understanding?
Essentially, to acquire the right-of-way to build the projects, to improve 200 South, Ellingham, and even 300 South there where they cross, essentially, it's about a million dollars of crossing, an additional cost. And so as you, the more times you cross it with different improvements, it costs more than the road itself.
Forgive me for slowing you up too, but are those, are those redundant? Because, because they have to cap off and enlarge? How do they do that without stopping service? Are a couple of those lines redundant?
No, their lines aren't redundant, so that's part of the, the logistics of their construction are absorbent. And I, and I don't, I don't claim to understand. I think we all said in the meeting, and they brought all their heavy hitters when we met in Indianapolis to discuss it. Essentially, they're saying is that they have a certain pressure rating for each of those lines for the amount of service, and the factor of safety that they have to meet per federal guidelines for high-pressure gas lines. And so by expanding that right-of-way or changing the classification of the road, they have to meet the new federal guidelines for that, or it impedes their allowable operating pressure, which is what they're transmitting and selling on the open market.
Okay. I didn't mean the whole job, that was just one of the first things that popped into my head, why, why do they need to bolster and, and-
So, so for instance, Chuck there on 200, if you want to go out there and just put another inch of asphalt down?
Right.
No big deal.
No problem.
But as soon as you say, okay, I want to widen out, two feet on either side, timeout. That's when they come up for errors.
Move the poles, move the utilities, widening the road. If that, it ever has a potential within City of County's interest of trying to make that a larger corridor, it's a very expensive option.
So-
And so right now, for, for the purposes of this study, as Butler Termins and myself, it was, it was a difficult decision to come to, but it really isn't cost-effective for us to pursue spending that amount of money, because it takes a project, takes, even for the Hoosier Highway project, takes a $7 million project, and you're adding, at one point, they said $10 million.
Exactly, that what it was saying.
So they said $10 million, that's the first letter we got.
So in a nutshell here, just, so I think, I don't know if I missed anything, basically from Highway One, still can't cut across truck traffic to get over to Hoosier Highway on 300 South or 200 South, because of this situation.
It would still remain a gravel road for now, but-
Because that's always kind of been the whole hope, that we could get people off of Highway One and get them over.
And you already have an existing truck route there, which is 200 South. You're not changing that path.
Yeah, but still, it's, as we all know, once you go across that Red Rock track, yeah, yeah.
These very reasons.
Yeah, so we kind of-
And so this kind of documents why the decisions have been made, why, why can't we just do that? Because there's a, there's a multimillion dollar barrier.
I understand. That was my hope, was that you had something that could get, that was very visible and very-
You're like, why not? Why not? And this is an answer that the public needs to understand, why Wells County just can't swallow the bill of saying, we're going to just eat $4 million, because that doesn't put any asphalt down.
No.
And to try to live in the right-of-way that's there, there's not. The utilities are, everything's crammed into that space now. There are other, other routes, and improving 300 South from the gravel road crossing that's at the railroad tracks to accommodate truck traffic, which was initially the, the vision of, I think, where we went into this, I mean, okay, how does this develop? How does this work? I mean, essentially, it said that you need to stop here at Ellingham, because the continuation here was, that mile of road would be a $7 million road burden, at the very least. So, for a road, for that section, has no homes, it's just cornfield right now, it's just not something that we could afford, so.
So we try to force it that way? And I can make this akin, this is kind of a joke, you want to do something, and then our wife tells us to do something else, and then we change her mind.
Yeah.
That wife was, it was Panhandle Eastern, they made that decision for us. They forced our hand. So it's kind of like-
And going farther south, is it still going to solve the problem either, right, to get across?
Do we, we don't cross it again?
We didn't, we, say it again, sorry.
Panhandle, we don't, really. With, with all the projects that we just mentioned, we don't cross it.
We, we have a little improvement with the local tracks, Project Three, but that's with one line. It can be open cut, and instead of $4 million, it's, I think we were estimating 1.7, which is still a high estimate. So that is a little more manageable for a project. It gives you the corridor that you need. You only encounter them on one of the four lines that they have there. Now, when you get down to 350 South to Hoosier Highway from State Road One on 350 South over, that does not account the gas line. By then, the gas line's on the west side of the road.
That's why I was asking, if you're going further south, that gives you-
350 South, you could, but everywhere from 300 South up through, even up to Harvest Road, you end up encountering that. So potential connectors, I know there was discussion of taking Harvest Road South to two south, you would cross that line as well. And so you add whatever project you're adding about.
So as long as you can get over, well, okay, yeah.
You essentially take this corridor and say, you better cross this, it better be where you absolutely want it. Or existing road, or where you absolutely need it from an infrastructure, it's got to be a critical path. And consider it that way, because they've got, they've got a right-of-way there. Was it something that was considered when the right-of-way went in? I don't know. I mean, it predates me by too many years, and I don't think that this sort of long-range planning was there. If future improvements need to be developed, we wanted to take this into consideration, because it's just too expensive. Uh, in, in a century, it'll, it'll ruin projects and it's, we need to make good decisions around it and not ignore it, so.
And that's why we have underneath the study area, why utilities cost analysis. If we did go through this exercise, you, you might've been caught on the short side of a lot of things.
You start planning for this.
That's on page two. So on then, on page three, you know, we already had been there looking at the project site. Uh, I think number one is the one that's gonna be built with a million dollars that you just got?
Yes, that project actually is going out for this Thursday. Um, so I'm hoping this finds either, uh, project space, right?
That one two, that was not part of the study. But again, you know, if you see number three, that's Hoosier Highway and you can see the new alignment. And uh, with the new alignment, we were, uh, leaning to railroad crossings. And uh, then the other one, number five, which is three hundred from uh, two hundred east to State Road one. And number five A from State Road one to four hundred fifty east. And then number uh, four, uh, number six would be the uh, intersection improvement of four hundred fifty and uh, uh, three hundred south. And then number seven would be the intersection improvement also for uh, two hundred and uh, County Home Road. Then going to the next page, uh, there is a summary of the cost. I would like you to take a look on the third column from right to left, the one that says total cost. Uh, I'm just gonna go over the Hoosier Highway, uh, is the first one. Uh, total cost for that would be, I'm gonna just round the numbers, that would be seven million. So we go to the first column, which is preliminary engineering. We assume a twelve percent would be a good number to you for preliminary engineering, that's like four hundred fifty five thousand dollar. Uh, we looked into how many parts were along that corridor and we estimated five hundred fi, five hundred twenty six thousand dollar on right of way cost. Uh, utility, may, mentioned earlier that there is still a gas, a gas line there that uh, they would wanna upgrade, uh, one hundred east, they wanna upgrade and they want one point seven million dollar for that. Uh, there are no railroad costs. Uh, construction cost is three point seven million, I'd say three point eight better. And then for construction inspection, we assume uh, fifteen percent, that would be like five hundred seventy thousand dollar. And that would be the total for the seven million dollar. Uh, if you take that total of seven million dollar and apply eighty percent, that would be the federal aid funding that you will get. And that would be five point six million. And then the local fund will be twenty percent and that will be one point four million. And if you add all of those projects, uh, the total cost for all the project will be eighteen million. And then federal funding will be fourteen point four million and then your local match will be three point six million. And on the last page, uh, I'm gonna go a little bit back, uh, the, the green line is the gas line, approximate location. And you can see how that grows three hundred south and two hundred south. And we talked about that, that those were eliminated from the study because the cost would be extremely much for the county. And then you can see the yellow X, those are the railroad crossings that we're gonna eliminate with the new alignment of the Hoosier Highway, which is the dash line there. And with that, we are open for questions.
Is this, I'm not trying to jump out of where the study group is, but back to that three fifty, County Road three fifty? Is that, I mean, looking at, there's not a lot of houses on that road, is there? I mean, it's pretty open, obviously it's.
Developments, Travisville, I think it is, by the corner, there are three million.
I mean, I'm just, I mean, in reality, for, for, for anywhere to get from highway one over to the Hoosier, that's about the only option, really, I mean, yeah, I mean.
And the actually, the, the crossing of railroad tracks is already gated. So there's actually improved crossing there and that road is chipped and sealed.
Is it chipped and sealed? Okay, I don't get that far.
Right now, because you, because three fifty south goes over Hoosier Highway and then right now it knives back so far over the corner, essentially in Bluffton, it doesn't go over to industrial park, it doesn't really direct them where they would be wanting to go. I think it'd be a more attractive route afterwards. For the county, it's more the county road.
It's a county, yeah.
It's more you, definitely, it's a county road. So if you're gonna justify spending county dollars on county road, it's, it's, there's no risk of this being part of the decision often in the foreseeable future.
Like I said, I'm not trying to harp.
Talk about two hundred south, I think during our discussions, I'll be very honest, I, I think that the, an improvement of two hundred south certainly is something to be considered. It just needs to be some sort of joint project. It needs to be a city county, uh, project at some point and how that gets developed, so.
And again, we're dealing with the Eastern.
At some point, but obviously, our focus of this study is to try to see how does, how does the county corridor bring county residents into the jobs, the shops and such? Because this is the metropolitan area of Bluffton. And so I think there's been some lacking and having that road network. And there's been safety concerns. I've been watching accident histories since I've been here, trying to see where, where accidents are happening and, and looking at different intersections and hearing complaints and trying to address them. So, um, some of these areas weren't exactly what we thought, but that's why you studied that.
Foolish question, but there's no precedent here where Panhandle has stepped in and said.
Eleven million the first time. Eleven million. So that one, we said, no, that cannot be, so we made with them to see.
There must be some confusion.
I was wondering that with them, and then I was like, oh, you wanted to do this?
You'll let us.
Then they, then they read, I'm like, okay, no, we can change this. You know, now the new practice is four point five million. Oh, thanks, but still.
Yeah, still.
It's still not worth our, when we look at the cost of the project.
Yeah, that was.
I felt that that wasn't necessary, but you know, it certainly is something that's open for discussion. I mean, we haven't closed anything at this point, but honestly, it's, it's very expensive. Something we wanted to, uh, stop at here and, and why they put this slide together was a little bit my own request, is I wanna kinda lay out some of the projects we're seeing here. None of these projects are things that was county has to do. All of these are opportunities for Wells County to, and funding sources that we can pursue. The local tracks being one of them, the community crossings projects. Once you make an intersection safer, when you make those fundamental changes in right of way and those road alignments, they stay that way. You know, those are, those are fairly permanent. The most permanent pieces of Wells County history is your right of way and those networks. And so, and the legacy of poor design or skimping on it definitely haunts us for a long time. And it's a slow process.
I'm, I'm curious, Toby and somebody not, you know, being involved with NERC here, I know a lot of times they deal with things through the chamber and all kinds of, you know, they're always looking for different angles. Is that even around anymore, some of the chamber monies that, you know, I know during uh, ten years ago, I guess, basically eight years ago, a lot of that usually wasn't big dollar stuff, but it was five, eight million dollars of, of monies were coming from the Fed and whatnot. Is that still?
Tiger grant?
Kinda, yeah, yeah, you get away from, you get away, yeah, I was trying to name of it.
We first, we looked into that. Yeah, and uh, the tiger grant system actually has changed.
Cause it's more into the industrial, you know, where you're showing economic side, yeah, yeah.
The problem with the tiger grant program is that it is very competitive. You're essentially competing on the national level. At that point, you're actually competing against the states for federal money directly to the federal government. If Endot's difficult to work with, it's even harder to work with the feds. And those federal projects, it's, was it twenty percent match, but that's the minimum. Um, if you're gonna be considered, my understanding is the projects that are awarded are contributing more like forty percent.
Oh, really? Okay.
So your local match.
Yeah, it only goes.
I thought it was, yeah.
You're looking at high profile, uh, overpasses and major millions of dollars.
To do those projects, you need a large industry coming in that needs major infrastructure to fit in. You know, if, if GM wanted something, the GM in Fort Wayne and Allen County would go for a large tiger grant to do a four lane overpass. Our project, I mean, we're on that.
Oh, that's great, are you?
We're talking, what we're doing is simply making use of Endot programs that have been there, that we're very competitive in. Most of these projects, if you look at these, the largest one obviously is the Hoosier Highway and a big part of it is the one point seven million dollars for Panhandle at them. That was the lowest number we were able to achieve to, to accommodate that. But what that does do is that gets you a mile of road, eliminates rail crossings. You get now an uninterrupted road section from the industrial crossings two eighteen, which connects to I sixty nine. You now have a southwest corridor that's an interstate route, direct interchange. Uh, that makes that whole route and that access much more attractive for what, what can do. Uh, the developer ground around there, I've got some letters from the county auditor looking at what, or assessor's office was looking at what that would be going in potentially if developed. And it was anywhere from uh, two hun, hundred fifty million dollars in assessed value to upwards of five hundred million in assessed value for that area along that, that new corridor. Uh, because of the rail access for industrial or even if you win housing, which I, I don't know that that would be the direction, but really it kinda depends on your, on area plan and, and the future for it. We, we develop those. But each of these projects at two and three million dollars are well within the capability of federal aid program through Endot. The smaller projects, we, in the organization, laid out what could be community crossings versus federal aid. We wanted a bingo list, essentially say, what needs, what criteria? And which funding source are we gonna try to capitalize the projects to, to target them? Uh, one, to save wasted effort on my part, I don't need to be bringing requests to you for funding for projects. Uh, and to make sure that these made sense. And there's some projects that need to go before others. Certainly, this curb correction project one needed to be done. And project two there need to be done before we ever do the, the realignment of Hoosier Highway to Adams Street. You need to get those curbs that are generally not conducive to the traffic if you're gonna try to direct any more traffic to those areas. So we wanna make those two safe improvements and that's why you prioritize one. We've got the funding secure, so we're gonna move forward. Project two is actually, I signed design contracts for that, so there, the design's underway for that project. So we're, we're well in line. If we're lucky enough to use the local tracks, it'll be two thousand and twenty two is the construction window. If that doesn't work, we've actually finalized a federal aid app for the same project. Uh, that would be fiscal year twenty twenty four. You know, those are the two windows. Uh, federal aid projects, applications today are six years out. So having a plan like this is really good for the next ten years. And um, if, if this is the direction we wanna continue to go, which from what I've read from Endot, we've seen some success, I would've loved to have told you, we got local tracks money as well, but the, being told we'd find out by the end of September to the end of November to now sometime in the next few weeks, that kinda leaves us in the works as far as when and announcement make up. I think our project's competitive. I've been told that we're still one of the, one of finalists in it. They've not thrown our project out, it's very eligible. Um, and we've been encouraged to, to keep it in front of Endot through other channels so they have other opportunities to award it. Because there are selection and criteria delinquents. We're not ahead of the head of Wells County. You know, a community of twenty seven thousand people to, to compete against Indianapolis and Fort Wayne is not something that we're, we're uniquely equipped to do. You've gotta make your case and studies like this are helpful for that. Now, with that.
Nate, I just have a quick question to make sure I understand, so I apologize. On page five, the, the issue with Panhandle Eastern is that, that purple area that we just have to cross right over, is that where the issue is with them?
Correct.
So that little crossover is one point seven million?
Mm-hmm.
I just wanna make sure I understood.
Absolutely, and that is closing the road, open cutting it, doing their work. Um, when you, when I saw the numbers, they're mind boggling, but um, they have that right of way and they're covering their expenses.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, cause remember, we just got one green line that kinda shows that corridor.
Right.
But there's four within that green line.
There are four lines within the green line.
Twenty, so every time you cross them, yeah.
They're, they're twenty four inch tubes, aren't they? Or a couple of them are, they're, they're not small.
Yeah, they went through and they did a thorough review of what they're, but they're covering their expenses. They don't wanna tell us one number and then say, oh, you know what, we missed a zero.
Yeah.
And so they, they're, my hope would be is that the cost would continue to go down, but you're not gonna be able to tackle projects like this without some assistance and you don't wanna go into it assuming that that's not gonna be a problem. So we, we definitely having these studies help us, keep us from making poor decisions on, oh, of course, we'll just, we'll run something along. And you get, you get blindsided.
And Endot, and Endot is aware of this study that we have performed, uh, and they're, and I don't think they've applauded, but they, that's what they wanna see. They wanna see a, a well thought out process that you do have a plan, that you're just not throwing, well, I like to do this project and throw it on the board. Well, how'd you come up with that? But if you have something in. Now, is, is this possible forever? Things change, if you get a big business in, something could change. But it's a start and that's what Endot and everybody else wants to see.
I mean, if we, if, if uh, twenty years from now or ten years from now, there's development to say, we have to do something on two hundred south, then you know going into it that there's gonna be some expense, it's gonna go into that. Um, but at this point, it was kinda, where are we gonna spend the money that fits the best bank profile? And this was the route in that targeted area. Now, I, I realize that we've done a very small area of Wells County with this study. We did target a, a piece of the low redistribution funds, targeting the south corridor, laying this out. There's been some interest, but I've been asked by the commissioners, what are, what are you gonna do on this road up north? What about this road? And we haven't really talked to Austin about development of roads around there. There's a lot of T roads and the roads that don't go and there's, there's mile and a half sections of east west county roads without north connectors that just never existed.
There's a lot of traffic.
There's, and there's a lot of traffic and development is going north. So why did we study this out? Because there are structural issues with this area and in need of address. There is additional funds, I think from this study, it was hourly not to exceed. I think there's a percentage of this study that was not used. Uh, there's additional funds within the low redistribution that we could continue this same direction and study that north corridors and look, it's a wider area in that scenario and see where projects could fall in from that and see where the interests are. Meet with Norwell Schools, meet with Austin, do some of the very same things around here and continue to find other projects that are beneficial to both Wells County, Austin and even the north side of Bluffton, because we're, we're not, we don't, didn't do that with this study. But because we're targeting a couple of different funds, which we've gotten some of that money. And um, part of the reason for that check is because of studies like this. And in fact, this, this large report was attached to all three of the federal aid applications I put in just recently. So the state has this and it's part of that. It's a question I get asked on every, every application, is this part of a larger, uh, study? I can say, yes, and here it is. Um, that helps. It certainly lets you go through the logical explanation as to where that is. And this, this dot on the, on the overall map is where this project is. Or this dot is where this project is in our system and we do understand our system. It's not a one off project where an administrator says, you know what, we wanna go for federal aid, let's just pick a project and see if it sticks. And when I submit to Endot, they hear the same project, oh, by the way, have you heard about this project? And I just admire them to death with the details of them. Here's where we're at with our projects because essentially, in, in some ways, to them, I'm your cheerleader. And so I'm continually stumping for Wells County for state funds. And so maybe we don't always get money, but when we do, that's gonna come out of these studies. This gives me the, gives me the club to use on Endot because we've gone through the work and due diligence to make sense of it.
Just curious, when you talk about going north and not, not getting into the weeds on anything, you got another gas line that runs along two twenty four there, is that, has that been an issue with, you know, Buckeye or whatever that runs? I mean, has that become another, I'm, I'm thinking, where will we get away from this green line, you know? You know what I'm saying, just from future?
Some of those and say, you know, where are the crossings, where have we done it? You know, I think the Norwell Road crosses that when they go north.
They do, yeah.
And so that's, that federal aid project, when they did that, did cross the railroad with their, and they purchased the right of way for that section there. We'll have to look at it.
I mean, just in a guess, we'll probably be, yeah, you never know to deal with it, but it's another obstacle to deal with, yeah.
And it's much easier to do it and cheaper to do it when you're at this phase than it is when you're trying to say, we wanna do this and then we find the problem. You never wanna go that route.
It's kinda like finding, uh, peat moss underneath your road and I'll say, well, you didn't know it was there. Or if you didn't take soil, uh, you know, so it's just being due diligence.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, you, you save every dollar you don't have to spend by identifying this and then tailoring your expectations around what do you have? And that's, that's an important part of it. And okay, if this is the sort of study you wanna see as a coun, council when we're trying to develop projects, um, I'll take, take that advice and I'll pursue getting the numbers from them to work on the north study, what that would essentially entail. And then I'll simply get that to you at another meeting.
When you guys do these studies, you, you look at it, I mean, obviously there's road safety, there, there are issues there, but also from an economic development standpoint.
Absolutely.
It's like when you talk about the northern part of the county, you know, what are, as you're going through that process. you're going through that process, what are the areas that also, because infrastructure leads to economic development, there are a lot of considerations working with economic development, Chad, you know, some of those groups as well.
Well, when we had our first meeting, it was at the basement of the Chamber.
Chamber, yeah, Commerce.
And we invited all the industrial companies on that corridor, and then we invited Chad, he was there. So everybody, so everybody had a voice. Why, what do you want to see? How do you want to see it? So if you, if it does go to Austin, then you get like, you get Austin, you get Orwell, you get other people involved too, onto the table.
And I think, just based on some discussions I've had internally with a couple of the other department heads about it, I think we're going to tailor the north study a little bit differently because we don't have maybe the dense industrial area that we do. I mean, there's, I think in the study, we look at it, I think, in the slide I gave to Endot, there was twenty-two hundred jobs in the industrial corridor there, and this road, one mile of road tied all in then, I mean, it was ten percent of the entire population of the county works in that industrial area. And I mean, as far as investment to what the jobs are, it was, it was a pittance in a way. It's a big number for Wells County, but in reality, it's, it's a tenth of the entire county's population, which is more than ten percent of our total workforce. You know, you got a lot of people from outside the area coming in.
Right.
You know, that's, that's an important factor in what future development we have. You know, some of it's going to come down to housing studies. We need to tie that a little bit more into it. That's where the east, the southeast corridor in that section, is that where housing needs to go. We might have a couple more public meetings with that because it's a little more ambiguous. Some of this study actually came out of a two thousand transportation study too, so we kind of knew where this was going. I think the panhandle was something that was missed in those old studies. I mean, it just, it had completely ignored it because it was recommendations of, let's do a new road two fifty south. Well, you would have had a brand new right of way over those, it would have been even more money. So we, we made some adjustments, and I think that that might be, it'll certainly, and we'll certainly get discussions on development going, because if you have a public meeting and say, we're, let's say we're just considering a whole new road on the east side of Austin, north-south for two or three miles, new bridge over the eight mile, I mean, whatever those may be, certainly that's going to get some buzz. It's, it's big dollars, but is it a need that Wells County has? Is there public interest in it? Does Austin want it? Does Wells County want it? Then it comes down to, okay, now how do we finance the dream? You know, what are we dreaming? What are the hardships of it? And how do we achieve that? That's something that we have to try to develop. And these, these studies are helpful documents to do that. I'd love to see this and a north corridor study applied in your comprehensive plan. And then all of you have the opportunity to start to stump toward, you know, what, what are your visions as council people? What's your impact on Wells County going to be? How are you going to try to move the county forward? These are all big, I mean.
Big numbers.
Big numbers. This study, the north study, honestly, if I get, if I get this, that done in fifteen years of my career, first fifteen years of my career, that's huge. It really are, because some of these have taken years to even get to this point. If we do some of the north corridor stuff, you know, you're talking, even from federal aid, I just told you, twenty twenty-four is the current federal aid call. We have to do the study. We might not see the first project in the north corridor in the middle of twenty thirty's. So, but you've got a plan ten years in advance.
Man, that's depressing.
Well, it is. How long does it take to Maple Crest Road project?
Yeah, exactly.
You've got to, you've got to realize that you've got to play, when it comes to transportation, you've got to play the long game.
Yeah.
And if you're not playing the long game, you're not going to succeed in funding from these sources. And you better have a long-term vision to achieve that. If you don't, then you're just going to be doing worst first, and you're going to be spending money, and you're not going to be getting the match. Eighty percent grant money, I mean, this, this total here, it's not so much what our obligation is. This study, essential addition, you could receive as much as fifteen million dollars in state and federal aid. That's just the federal aid projects. Community crossings, the, the south corridor project, that's six hundred thousand dollars of state money that got pumped into Wells County to solve a problem that's been there since one hundred west was constructed.
Yeah.
So we want to try to continue to do that, and that will forever be a different intersection. And so we want to make those more permanent marks, do those improvements. And honestly, there's some areas I, you know, I'm looking at Austin and what it could, what it could develop from, from a project like that, but you need to get the public input, and if the public's not willing to support it, they're not going to put the money forward, they're not going to enable you to put their tax dollars for this. And we still need to do this, you're still talking about over three million dollars of match funds. You know, I've sent you notifications about the community crossings match and what we're going to, where we're going to be as far as exhausting, what we've set aside. While that money's there, we want to try to maximize that. Want your, the million dollars you put up can fund up to four point five million dollars of projects between the first community crossings, the last, and the federal aid call. We want to continue to do that and put it in these projects. So this is helpful. I appreciate the work.
We can talk all night long.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, appreciate it.
Any other questions on what we presented tonight? You don't have, you don't have the study. I mean, that's the study, the.
Yeah, yeah. Electronically, I know you'd sent, sent over, yeah, electronically, yeah, it's a hundred pages or whatever.
I don't expect everybody to read it, but just so that you've had it.
Sure.
Have an opportunity to look at those.
Hey, Nate, just a point of clarification on the Adams Street connector to Huger Highway.
Yes.
Call that reconstruction, is that, that should be new construction, shouldn't it?
Yeah.
It's not really reconstruction.
Essentially, it's a, we're, we're reconstructing Huger Highway in a whole new spot essentially. You're right, it should be like a new construction.
Because that's, yeah, it's dirt.
Exactly right. But yeah, that. So, no, you're right. It's a green field to that road.
So this pretty much concludes the seventy-five thousand in our study we were looking for.
So with your support, if you're interested, I will talk to these guys about putting another number for north corridor, if that's what you'd like to do. My understanding is the low redistribution fund still has additional funds beyond that amount, and that's what you want to try to allocate that funds to. And then we can do another study in twenty nineteen, take some more time. There's not a pending project per se. I think we've got a fairly full plate for the next couple of years, but I think over a longer period of time, that, that may be very valuable. But I don't want to put them through the work of putting a number together if that's not something you're interested in using those funds for.
I think it helps to develop a countywide plan for what we want to do if, if the money's there to do it, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's not, as long as it doesn't sit around and collect dust, you know, as long as we keep an eye on where it's at, you know, we don't just do it.
Okay, I'll, I'll put it back at you. We'll put the study together, ladies and gentlemen, that's up to you.
That's exactly, so the dust doesn't get over.
Yeah. It's your dust, it's not our dust.
Exactly. That's, that's the only thing I, sometimes we get to.
The commissioners, the council have to do something with it then.
Well, and as your county engineer, it's certainly my goal to make sure that these become part of every process and plan. And that's why these maps are important, because it's much easier for me to pull this map out than to say, hey, on page twenty-seven of your comprehensive plan, these maps and these slides go in my presentations to Endot, and as soon as these no longer become valuable, I want to try to make an update. And, and I want to incorporate this, I want to study into your county comprehensive plan. Then it's in everybody's hands, because they need to see where Wells County's trying to go. And, and a, and a good judgment of our success is essentially execution of that plan. You know, I got a lot of old studies of jammed dust, and honestly, from old bridge, bridge studies and needs and transportation plans that were run in two thousand and ninety-five and prior, I got more than dust, coffee stains of ours. They're just, they're, essentially, when I would show them to some people, they're like, we did this? Like, yeah, this, I mean, some of these were there, because they weren't, they weren't important to the decision makers at the time. Certainly, it's important to me because I see the value and what that can bring to you.
Or the allocation of funds went someplace else. I mean, that's how I, that's how I look at it. Priorities at the time, so.
And so, and that's, and that's, that's fair, that's fair. And because you, we can't make the economy do what we want to. You know, when there's opportunity for growth and development, like right now, there's, community crossings is, is here today and may be gone tomorrow. I don't want to let Wells County not apply when there's money available to match your needs. There are going to be needs after that process is over, so.
But, but refilling the coffers for the money available, it's not a quick, it's not a quick thing sometimes.
And so you need to, you need to make some, they're hard decisions to make, absolutely. And so they're, they're waiting, and, and I don't want to be discouraged by not succeeding when we apply for funds, but we want to have that vision laid out. How fast is really the determination of the public, like officials, coming together, making sure that there's a concerted effort to do things like this here and elsewhere around the county? So hopefully, that kind of expresses kind of how I try to approach this on behalf of you all. And certainly, your support has brought this together. Your support on, on the north corridor will do something very similar there. So, all right, well, I'll talk to them about that and submit something.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hard work, yeah. Yeah, good seeing you guys, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Nate.
Thank you.
All right, we got on here for Judge Kirkoff and juvenile bed space contract, but I'll see Judge Kirkoff here.
I don't see, I'm giving him a reminder, but.
Must have something else going on, yeah.
He did not give me the contract, so I'll see if he can come to our twenty-first meeting.
The twenty-first. So we're not going to do a five-minute meeting on the twenty-first like we normally do at the county.
No, but it looks like it might be a little bit longer.
All right, we'll, we'll table that one then, so. Okay, I guess we're down to Ms. Lane's business.
Okay. Let's see here. We have, I'm going to kind of flip over it because we're going to discuss some other stuff, but I have the sheriff's salary contract for twenty nineteen, and we pay our sheriff through a sal, a salary contract, and we've done that for quite some time. The only changes we made from the twenty eighteen agreement to the twenty nineteenth agreement was the additional thousand dollar salary, like we did all county employees, and of course, we have a new sheriff. You know, so the, you know, we have Scott Holiday as the sheriff. Scott has signed the contract, and it was presented to the commissioners yesterday. They have signed the contract, so it would just need to be approved by the council members.
Any questions? I know when it, it's not for us, but they just explain very easily, it's pretty, pretty simple.
So we need a motion to approve that?
Yeah, we'll need a motion in a second on that, so. If you'd like to make a motion on the contract.
We'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
We have a second. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Motion carries on.
Okay, and then also, we have a contract that we do for the compensation of the county surveyor, since it is on our salary ordinance, that the surveyor has whatever degree of authority, he has to have, he's paid one salary, and if he doesn't.
Yeah, he's a registered, becomes a registered, yeah.
Registered survey, yes, registered surveyors, one salary. If he's non-registered, he's paid a different salary. And we've also had that set, that we won't change it in the middle of the year, so we set the salary by an ordinance, so it will be set for the end of the year.
And it's based upon the percent, or the rate, the state law, the way, if I remember it right.
Yes, it has to be one and a half times.
Has he become a registered?
No.
Oh, okay, so, okay, okay.
So this salary contract would state that his salary would be that of the salary as a non-registered surveyor. So we just need to approve that also. Did that make sense? Any other questions?
Yeah, that's what I understand.
Okay.
Motion to approve as read.
That's right. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Motion carries there. And if I remember right, in that, if he does become registered in the middle of the year, we have that right in our salary ordinance.
It would go into effect for the next year.
Effect to follow.
Yeah, yeah. We kind of did that so we wouldn't have to kind of change that. Okay. And the other thing I have is board appointments. Since this is our last official meeting, we do have a special meeting scheduled for the twenty-first, which sounds like it's going to be a bit longer than what we planned. But you do have three annual appointments, and I sent that to you earlier today explaining that we did advertise, and we also posted it. We did not get any new people to apply for the boards, but the people that are currently on the boards have all stated they would be willing to serve again for the next year. And these are annual appointments, and it is for Alcohol Beverage Commission, which currently is Tony Garten. Area Plan Commission's currently is Jerome Markley, and the Pita Boa representative for the council is Judy Affholder.
So we can go ahead and take action on this?
If you would like to, because I know that they're going to start meetings, and they would like to start notifying the people.
Why don't we, we've done in the past, we've always done each one individually, so we have a motion for each one for the official records, if we'd like to do that again. The first appointments for the Alcohol Beverage Commission, Tony Garten.
I'll make a motion to appoint Tony Garten.
Do we have a second?
To the ABC.
We have a second?
For twenty nineteen.
All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Motion carries there. And the next one would be the Area Plan Commission, which is Jerome Markley currently, and he would like to do that again, was the only person I guess that stepped up.
I'll make a motion to approve Jerome Markley as area plan.
We have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second? All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Motion carries. And the third one, third and last one, is the Property Tax Board Appeals, Judy Affholder. Again, she's done it for many years.
I'll make a motion to approve Judy Affholder's property tax board appeals.
Have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second? All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Motion carries there. So they are officially back on board again.
Perfect, and I will just notify them. Okay, and then the other two items we had on the agenda was the twenty eighteen amended salary ordinance and the twenty nineteen salary ordinance. I talked to Todd a little bit prior to the meeting, since we're still unsure about the agreement between the Regional Sewer District and the board commissioners and the county council on that agreement. We kind of need to maybe just wait till we get all of them done at the same time, so I think that we would like to.
Yeah, it makes sense to just wait until the twenty-first and we can, assuming everything falls into line, and then we can, because if we do it now, we may be turning around and changing something, so.
Make amendments.
Yeah, amendments, so we might as well wait and do it all one time, so.
Do you have a deadline there on when that happens?
We have to adopt it on the twenty-first.
First.
Both.
So it has to be, has to go through the other channels and then back to us, so.
I think that the RSD is meeting on Monday, is that correct?
They have to meet.
And that's going to be on your agenda to discuss a little bit.
I've got it, it's been sent out to the RSD's attorney, and so he is reviewing it, and I know he's been contacting Roy. I had a conversation with Mark Billy a little bit earlier today about it.
Yeah, there may be some questions about that through Mike or through Mr. Burry.
He's got some questions about it, so I'll, I'll let him speak, or, I mean, he's their legal counsel, so.
Absolutely.
That, that meeting's when, Nate? Next Monday at six?
We had to move it because of one of the board members is just traveling. He was late last time, he's like, hey, we'll make it easier if we moved it to 6:30. So I don't have a board meeting here at 6:30.
Sorry, you guys meet here, right?
Yep. Now, and if you use this, this is actually the RSD's address, I use that upstairs closet as their address. Sweet 208.
There you go.
There are some empty filing cabinets in the courthouse today. I asked Bobby.
Can you have that one?
She's like, well, they don't have a home. I said, put RSD on, I'll just go over here.
There you go, there you go.
The RSD now has some leftover filing cabinets.
So Monday, Monday the 10th at 6:30 here.
So I'll be sending emails about that. I was finalizing the agenda a little bit today because that discussion, how do I want to present that on the court? I got confirmation, I believe Vicki Terry from ARCAP is going to be here at that meeting as well, and so she was the one behind the grant.
The grant part of it.
Used the grant funds and so we've been trying to use those for the budget. They kept saying, well, no, we just want you to pay for the study. I was like, well, we need this for everything that's in our budget. And so we've been trying to get that, so I think the concern is partly with the discussion is that if you spend on it here and have the sewer district just essentially give back a portion of the received funds that were given, then that means you can't match it. So it doesn't just cost the RSD, one dollar, it costs two.
Two dollars, yeah.
Out of the study and so then, or from the grant, because then that's not eligible. So that really kind of puts them in the.
Lot of moving parts.
The RSD hasn't, I don't think we've gotten our check from, we haven't even gotten the deposit from the commissioners.
I think you got your checking camera, right? Finally, but it's empty. So you got $1 in it?
They'll bounce on Monday, but it will bounce on Tuesday, so. I'm not sure, I believe it's a treasure. I agree with that, I'm not sure.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
There is, logistically, there's some issues for them and what they can do. I think there's some confusion and so there's going to have to be some.
But we'll just, we'll hold to the, you know, our end of it till the 21st so that other things get worked through, so we'll, we'll get to it, so.
I'm doing what I'm asked. Hopefully, I'm doing the service and doing work for the county that I'm trying to do, so. Certainly, trying to put the rest before everybody to make good use of these funds. The RSD's not going to be popular, but it's doing something that's necessary.